Good morning, I'd like to call out of County Board Supervisors meeting to order at this time. Mr. Bradford, would you lead us for the prayer?
Will you get to your chair?
All right, thank you for today, thank you for this meeting, thank you for being our joiner. We pray, Lord God, as you, as we conduct this business of Adams County on a day we got our hands, our heart, our minds, Lord God, let us be receptive of the information that we're about to be received. Let us be good steward over what has been done for us and at the end of the day, let us be grateful for all things in His name we pray, amen.
Would please face the light. Praise Jesus to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is to approve the dockets.
Is it?
Oh yeah, Supervisor Gray.
Present.
Supervisor Hutchins.
Here.
Supervisor Gaines. Supervisor Wilson. I am present. Dave Dean.
Present.
Brady Lewis.
Present.
Turner Slover.
Present.
And Miss Washington.
Present.
This time I made a motion to approve the dockets. Motion by Supervisor Hutchins, can I get a second? Second by Supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Ayes, ayes. Special presentations, if any. County business, Joey Fur, Chester Willis upfield, uh, Caulfield update, don't see him. Buddy Johns, ModCorp.
He's on, he's gonna be on the phone whenever y'all ready to go on.
Be ready.
I think Corbett's gonna get hooked up. She's over right there.
While she does that. At this time, we'll go to city government business, if any, while we wait on Ms. Corbett to get this gentleman on the phone. Scott, you don't have to bring the city government, no.
Hello, this is Buddy.
Hey Buddy, this is Adams County Board Supervisors, we have you on the call, you're up on the agenda.
Yes sir, thank, thank you very much, and I apologize that I couldn't be there today in person. Uh, next time I, I promise to be there. Uh, my name is Buddy Johns, I'm the, uh, president of ModCorp. We are a national, we tend to equipment contracting and modular, uh, fabrication and correctional products, uh, throughout the country. Uh, a little piece of history, I was actually, uh, the director of real estate for Core Civic when we built the net, the Adams County Correctional Facility, uh, down there back to two thousand seven through two thousand nine. And I'm very, very, very familiar, uh, with the product that's there. Uh, the cells, in fact, I was in charge of building those cells that are in that field right now. Uh, a couple of months ago, after I met the sheriff at a convention, uh, we came down, me and my engineers, uh, to look at those cells, to see if they were still usable. Uh, and they are, obviously they're in need of repair and painting and there's some spalling and some things. Not all of them are usable at this point, uh, but there's more than enough to be used, um, for, for the jail purposes, uh, that we understand at this time. So, uh, we know that they can be done, the question is, what is, needs to be done? And what type of a jail and or justice center needs to be there? Uh, since we've looked at those and made sure that we can look, uh, they can be used, we met with, uh, Core Civic, spoke with them several times to see what their intent was, and we believe, uh, that they are going to give those to the, uh, the county if they can be used. Uh, we, we believe that the demand for approximately two hundred beds, plus or minus male, female, beds for a jail there, that we would need about a hundred and thirty of those modules, the cells, not the, not the modules, a hundred and thirty total cells, uh, out of that field, and there would be enough to cover the needs for the housing units for new jail for Adams County. With that being said, uh, we, we then submitted a little bit further and evaluated what it would cost to replace, you know, there's some, some of the metal is rusted and fatigued, we have to cut out some of that, uh, in various, uh, cells, we would have to obviously clean and paint everything, uh, and make sure, uh, do the engineering to make sure that they're all a hundred percent usable. With that being said, we evaluated what benefit, uh, cost benefit would be to the county to reuse those cells. Typically, uh, the, the, right now in today's market, it would cost somewhere between forty and forty-five thousand dollars per cell to make those brand new in, in today's, uh, market. We believe that it would cost approximately twelve to fifteen thousand dollars per cell to get those back to the same standard. So, we, at the end of the day, if you, if we were to need and use a hundred and thirty to a hundred and thirty-five of those cells that are in that field today and save approximately thirty thousand dollars per cell, it's basically a four million dollar, thirty-five to four million dollar net savings to reuse those. Uh, so we went through that process first to see, is it feasible, is there value? And, and yes, we believe that it's feasible and we believe that there is that. Uh, we then took it a step further and met with a company called DLR, which is a national, um, architect, design and engineering company, uh, that actually did the original design and engineering of the Adams County Correctional Facility back in two thousand seven to two thousand nine. Uh, I met with them because I knew that they knew the product, uh, and in fact, they worked with Core Civic a couple of times since two thousand nine, I believe in two thousand fourteen, they did a study of those cells to see their condition, uh, and they were very aware of the constructability of those cells. So, that and a couple of very preliminary meetings to understand what type of jail, what the needs would be, what the justice center impact would be, um, uh, we sat down and started writing what's called a program to outline what the possibilities are of in the sizing of the cell. So, that, uh, DLR, about two weeks ago, handed me a program and said, based on the, the brief discussions that we've had and our brief understanding of what needs to be done, we believe a jail or justice center for Adams County utilizing these cells would be approximately seventy thousand to ninety thousand square feet. I'm actually in the process currently evaluating their program and their understanding, uh, and, and trying to, uh, do two things. One, budget what that would cost utilizing the cells that are there in general. In other words, if you were to build a justice center based on everything they put down, what would it cost? Uh, I'm in that process, I was hoping to have that done by now, but it's just, there's a lot more work than I thought there would be, um, just because their understanding and program, I think, is a little expensive. So, I'm trying to narrow it down to make it more feasible. Uh, I'm working with them, in fact, I was intending on coming back to the sheriff sometime, about two weeks ago, but I did not time to do that, I'm gonna do it now. Uh, what I'm hoping is that in the next thirty to forty-five days, uh, well, not hoping, what we are gonna do in the next thirty to forty-five days is lay out a more detailed program and some schematic drawings to what the footprints would look like, to talk about what the size of a jail and justice center would be, what it physically would look like, and more importantly, be able to give you a, a preliminary budget as to what it would cost to build that jail plus justice center, uh, in Adams County utilizing those cells there. And, uh, again, I was hoping to have more of that done for this meeting. Uh, we're working aggressively to get, uh, do our best to get something for the very near future, like I said, in the next thirty to forty-five days.
Yes sir, does anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I wanted to say this, uh, that's what I was looking for, cost of the total jail, whether it would take to build the jail or what would be the total cost. Supervisor Gray and myself, uh, when we went to Washington, we did speak to Congressman Thompson in regards to, um, the jail, Supervisor Gray, did you bring it up? And, um, we were trying to find out how we can go about getting some funding. I think he said, he spoke with you, Mr. Sheriff, still in here? Okay, he, he said he did talk to you in regards to a way of trying to go and get some funding for this jail. And also that it's probably another way we can look at doing this jail. We're gonna have to build a jail, let me first say it, that's gonna have to be done. With the jail that we have over there, um, it's obsolete, that jail was built back in nineteen seventy-five. Um, we got reeks falling and mortar falling from the back of it. Um, so I would like to say that, um, we need to look at trying to do a bond for this jail, to try to build it, if we don't have any other funding, a way of funding to do it, we can do a bond, but I would like to see us get a cost for this jail, a total cost is what we need, uh, what it would take to build this jail.
Buddy, this is Debbie, you talked to Travis and I, uh, a month ago or so. We gave him, we sent him our needs assessment, so this isn't just a, you know, he's just talking about cells. He's also, he's got that information, he also has the information of possibly two places that we could build and the cost of that, but again, this is a lot of information and that you've even done this for this time is great, we thank you Buddy, that he came to us, but we know that we got to get the cost, he knows that too, 'cause you can't ask for anything or figure out a bond or any of that till you, yeah, have that. So, that's what we're trying to, I hate to say, speed the process, but the needs assessment sure help on that.
Okay.
And thank you Buddy.
Yeah, you're welcome, and I'm happy to do it, and we really wanna make sure that when we give you, uh, a number, we say, hey, it can be done for this month, much money. Number one, uh, that it's the right product, but the right price at the same time, because, um, if you start going down one path, uh, it could take, you know, the years to get things like this approved sometimes. Uh, we wanna make sure that we're accurate from the very beginning, and again, I apologize for taking some time, but, uh, it's better to take the time and be right than, than do something quickly.
Well, any other questions?
There's no more questions, but I'd like to say, the sheriff and, um, Miss Germany also, 'cause I did speak with the supervisor in Pike County the other day, in regards to their jail and what they're going through with their jail, I would like to see you all definitely, and Supervisor Gray brought this up at the last, um, assessment, get the public involved. Because that, that is the, he said, that's one thing they do not do, is get the public involved, and that's why they, why they are where they are today, was this jail, that's something they should have done.
And we don't wanna do that until we have, like, everything, yeah.
All right, Mr. Buddy, thank you for calling in, and, uh...
Yep, thank you sir.
We'll hear back from you.
Okay, take care, thank you, bye-bye.
All right, I did see, uh, Joey Fur come in.
Good morning, um, I am here today, I've got a couple of, this is relative to the Adams County, Adams County, Chester Willis Field Baseball Field Project. I, we came before you in October last year and accepted the project as substantially complete. Uh, at that time, typically, the, the contractors do all of their, all of their, you know, fees with the exception of their retainage. At the time we accepted substantial completion, we did not yet have their pay request that day. Um, I was under, I, I thought that that, that this pay application was actually approved by the acceptance of the, um, substantial completion, but, um, after looking at the language in the motion, uh, we decided it would be best that I presented it again. So, I'm, I'm here to present, uh, their pay application number five, uh, for, for payment in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. Uh, this is due upon substantial completion, as I said, which was approved in October third, twenty-four. Um, that would leave a balance on the project of fifteen thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, that would be the retainage for the contractor, it would be due once he finished his, um, uh, his punch list and we accepted the project as final. So, uh, if it, the pleasure of the board, uh, I, I'd like to present that and recommend payment of pay application number five to, um, Southern Electric Corporation for the lighting, this is for the sports lighting. Uh, specifically, this is for the, uh, the lighting, it was part of the change order, which was for under the bleachers, uh, and two lights on the backside of the, of the stadium.
You heard the request, Mr. Fur, can I get a motion?
Can I make a motion?
Motion by Supervisor Hutchins, can I get a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Mr. Gray, any discussion?
Yes, President.
Yes, sir.
Um, the only discussion I have is, um, we, we even had quite a bit of rain and, uh, I did ride out there, uh, right after the rain, and is that field raining?
I have not stepped foot on that field.
I mean, uh, it looks like, it, around the edges of the field is what I'm seeing, uh, where there's a problem with the drainage.
On the field or off the field?
Inside the gate, but toward the gate, like, I don't know, from here to you toward the gate, that...
Left, left field, right field?
Uh, it looked like it's around the whole inside, that's just what I'm looking at.
Okay. I, I, I'll be happy to ride out there and take a look, that doesn't have anything to do with this particular project, but I will have to, I'll take a look.
This guy was Johnny, that's Johnny, he probably know.
So, are you saying, inside the playing surface or inside the, like, where the batting cages are?
Mm-mm, in the outfield, you, you have, uh...
Like the warning track?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'll take a look, sometimes with the warning track material, there's some granular fill there and when you get a lot of rain, it'll, it'll make that move a little bit, and then when the rain stops, it settles out, creates a little dam which holds water. So, a lot of times, it's just a matter of maintenance and raking that back so that the water can, the water's designed to flow through the fence out of, outside of the field, and then there's some, some, uh, catch bases to pick it up there. So, it, it could be that there, you know, that it just needs a little bit of raking and stuff.
Do you have Johnny's number?
Yes, I do, so, so I'll, I'll give, I'll give him a call.
I think he probably will get you out there.
Yes.
Hang on one second, Joey.
Is the outfield, outside the fence involved in the outfield too? The left field, center field is not draining?
Very little of it, uh, but very little work was done outside of the field, primarily for cost. We did, we do, in right field, we do have some, uh, subsurface drainage that we, that we, that we put in, uh, and then in left field, there's a swale there, but it is...
Scott, it roped off now from about the flagpole.
Some at this point.
Yes.
All that, all that, baby.
Okay, I'll take a look at all that and see. When, when we, when we completed the project, we knew there were some issues outside of the, the field that we, uh, were trying to take care of, but we, you know, it was gonna require, it was outside of the scope of, of any of the projects.
Well, majority of last season, we roped it off when there was rain events or whatever, because there was no grass.
Yeah.
And, and we hoped that once the grass rope was established, uh, which I did, I rode through there this morning before daylight, um, and I did see what you're talking about, basically from center field to the corner, um, I just hadn't been, I hadn't paid that much attention to the grass back there.
I'll, I'll take, excuse me, I'll take a look at it, and perhaps that's, uh, one of the items I had today was to discuss the, the future project, uh, for the locker rooms and the, and the restroom. I did speak with Lynette this morning.
Hang on one second, let me carry you out.
Yeah, okay.
All in favor? All opposed? Ayes, ayes.
Uh, let me finish my, my business with this particular project first, and then we can talk about these other issues, if that, if that's okay. Um, also, the project now has been, uh, the contractor has completed their punch list. Uh, my electrical engineers have come and, and verified and provided the punch list to verify that everything's done. So, I'm, uh, I, I have here a letter of recommendation for final approval of the project from Southern Electric Corporation. Uh, the, and, and with that would, would be the release of their retainage in the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars. Just a, a little bit for the public record, uh, the original contract sum was two, two hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. Uh, we did one change order, uh, which was to add the, uh, the lighting under the bleachers and, uh, and also some of the panels, uh, and, and service to, for, be, to, to be there to provide, uh, power to the restroom and the locker room building when those are ultimately built. That change order was eighty-five thousand, four hundred dollars, which you guys approved, um, I believe in April. So, the total contract sum was three hundred and five, uh, thousand, two hundred dollars. Uh, and all of the, the, the work has been completed, uh, and I, uh, am recommending final acceptance and, uh, also recommending that pay application number five, uh, excuse me, pay application number six be approved for the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars.
So, this is to release who?
This, this is their final payment of the retainage that we, the money that we have retained for, to be sure that they completed their punch list.
The electric?
Yes, the, the elec, this is just the electric, the electric.
Are all lights installed?
Uh, yes, yes, my, I, I did verify that this morning. Uh, the lights that we spoke of, they're there, I, I don't know if they're on a photo cell or a timer, maybe they just were not on, uh, and I can talk with them about making sure. They're hard to see, they're on that beam, and they're very skinny and flat, there's two of them.
When I saw you were on the agenda, I rode through there this morning. Oh great, my picture was blurred. Joey.
I rode by there, I rode, I rode by this morning and looked at, they're there, they're hard to see. They're LEDs and they're very flat, and they're on the beam, the middle beam, uh, there's two of them. And that, you, 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 I almost didn't see them, I had, I had to look, I had to look twice.
Okay.
But they, they shouldn't, they, they shouldn't be on, uh, you know, unless you decide you want them off, but, and we can put up, we can...
So, the, the security lightings or the safety lightings that were put under the stadium, those come on when?
Well, the, there are, the battery operators, those ones you're talking about, those come on if there's a power failure.
No, I'm talking about if there's a game going on.
Those have to be turned on, you know, you, you don't want those on all the time.
Okay, are those and the rear lights hooked to the same switch?
I do not know the answer to that, I can find out for you, but I don't, uh, but the...
Because those lights on the rear of that stadium need to be on photo cell?
Yes, that's right.
And they need to be on if it's dark, because there's children, elderly people walking around the back, and it's a safety concern.
Right, I, I can, I can check with the contractor to determine if the, um, if they are on a switch or on a hotel, uh, I, I, I don't know the specifics of the, um, of the drawings right here, uh, the...
Can you call him and, and we come back to this?
What's that?
Can you call him and we come back to this?
Uh, I've already got a call into him, but I, I'll, I'll try to call him again to be, to find out, you know, what the, what's...
Cause I'm not, I'm not comfortable, I'm not saying they won't come back.
Right.
I'm not comfortable releasing this until I know that's right.
Okay, all right, well, I'll, I'll...
And that's been a concern of mine from day one, the rear, the rear of that stadium, it's too dark.
When you, uh, when you, you know, brought that to my attention, I checked in, I called him immediately and told them that, that I wanted to talk to him about...
My, my children are running track, which they practice at Natchez High, and then I go to the gym right there by it.
Right.
I swear I have not seen those lights turn on.
Well, they may not be on a, they may, they may be, you know, on a switch and not a photo cell, but they need to be on, you're right, they're safety lighting, they need to be on all the time.
Correct.
The one, you don't want the ones under the bleachers.
I'm not approving it until, I mean, I'm saying, I'm not speaking for them, I'm not approving it until they're on photo cell.
Right, okay. Well, I'll, I'll find out.
Until we determine whether they're working or not.
Could you call in for the next meeting, I hate to make the drive back here for...
Uh, yeah, sure, I can call in.
Unless you wanna try to get with this guy and run out there with Johnny and come back?
I'll, I'll give him a little time to respond, 'cause I, I don't have to be, you know, uh, I don't have to be where my next meeting...
We're gonna be here Friday, I'm not gonna say what time.
Yeah.
That's after Friday.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll see what I can do to fix that, sir.
Okay.
Uh, you, you said that, at the end of your last statement, uh, I just mean, I would like somebody that from the county to be out there with you or whoever, it ain't like I don't trust you, but we always used to have somebody from the county, either Robert, uh, Johnny, to be out there to make sure that, uh, whatever somebody's saying is, is accurate.
Johnny was present when they did the, when they did the walkthrough, uh, but this may be a different issue. This light could have been approved, and it could be as simple as it's, you know, not a photo cell. It's a mi, I think it's a minor thing whether this is on all the time, but I understand it's important.
I know the stadium light, safety lights are working, because I've ridden by the field at night, seen them.
Right.
And it was neat.
Right.
On those lights.
Yes.
If you'll give me that in more so, I can sign it for the purpose.
Okay.
And, uh, all right, is that all you have, Joey?
Uh, yes, and we can, we can discuss, I, just, just going back to, uh...
You spoke with Lynette.
I spoke, yeah, I spoke with Lynette, and she said that the, the loan or the grant is pending, uh, but that, um, you know, it is gonna require our design services. I just wanted to, to bring that up and, and, you know, see, the pleasure, are, are you expecting a proposal from me for that? Or we wanna wait until it is approved? I, I think, going ahead with the design work and being ready to go to bid as soon as baseball is over, uh, you know, we do have some time on this week.
I would like to see what a cost is, did we ever get a cost on?
Yeah, the cost that we, the, the cost that we provided for the, for the grant application was four hundred and eighty-seven, uh, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, and that, uh, that, um, did, that included, um, ten percent soft costs for surveying and, you know, ADVs, that kind of stuff, was included in the forty-seven.
And this for the bathrooms and locker rooms, right?
That is correct.
So redo one, build a new one, and do it.
Redo one locker room, build another one, uh, identical to it, next door to it, and then build a, a toilet room with, uh...
Go ahead and approve this, I, I can't wait, we can go ahead, go back and get a motion, we can go ahead and approve.
For him to start the design process.
Well, let, let me ask you a question. What if the grant don't come through?
I mean, do you think...
We would have to... We'd have to put it in.
It, no, no, no.
That's what I'm saying.
Let, let's wait on the grant, okay.
I mean, when you think, when you think your turnaround time is...
Well, on this one, I think we have a little bit...
Eight percent, that's what your cost is?
Uh, well, I, I use state scale, uh, and, uh, is what the same, I use for, just to get an idea of the cost. Uh, the, the, the fee schedule that I, I use, which calculates, the smaller the process, the percentage goes up a little bit. Uh, on this particular project, it's saying, uh, nine point three percent, which would be a fee of forty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. Uh, Lynette recommended maybe, you know, just saying that we, we have a, an agreement to work tenet, uh, tentatively, or, or pending, uh, the approval of the, of the, of the money, and then once, once we do that, then we can go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we need to prove you to do work, that we don't know what we need.
I, I just wanted to, to bring it up, because, um, in, in the past, she had asked me to provide a proposal, uh, but I think we got enough in, in just including the money in the estimate, so she can make her grant, so... Yeah, I agree, I don't wanna be turned loose to do any work until you guys...
I think at one point, all she was needing was some figures for grant purposes to try to...
Yes, and I provided all that for her, and, and that's, that's what she included in the grant, so, that was something I wanted to...
So, when we get approval on this grant?
Yeah.
Just, we need you ready to roll?
Yeah, e- exactly.
Cause we missed this season already.
Right, and I, in, in best case, we've got bids and we're ready to start construction as soon as, as soon as the field's, you know, the, the season's open, so...
Thank you, if you would, call Johnny?
Yeah, I'll call Johnny and I'll probably get in touch with the lighting.
And get that, catch on those lights for us, please.
Okay, we'll do it, thank you.
Thank you. City, uh, city government business was none, departmental reports.
Good morning, can I ask, ask Adams County now? Okay, um, I'm presenting this morning with the, um, the proposal for the pants, where it gets paid in three consecutive, uh, installments. Robert's overseeing that project, he went out this morning, took pictures, that part of it is, is already done for the first installment, and he has pictures of those. First installment, we paid, we paid first.
Me and Johnny met the contractor after Thursday and walked through it with him, what he was gonna do. I went back and took pictures, they've got all the posts set, everything's set. So they mobilized and they set all the posts. And then after that, the fence will be up and the barbed wire at the top will be up. That'll be the second, and once the gate is up, that'll be.
Right.
So you're saying this is by one?
Yeah, that's stage one.
You heard the request?
Some of them.
Motion by supervisor Hutchins. And his second, second by supervisor Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes happy.
Also, the next thing that we're trying to do is get the, um, generator. Um, we do have quotes for the generator, but you're looking at the quotes, one of them is for twenty-four KW and one's for thirty-two KW. Where they're gonna give us some more quotes on the same thing. And we're asked for permission from the board when they submit those quotes with us on the cheapest price. And we move forward with getting the generator.
We don't have a price?
Yeah, we got prices, but they're different sizes.
It's gonna be a big difference. It's gonna be a big difference on the twenty-four or thirty-two.
I mean, I don't know that twenty-four's going up.
Yeah, I would think.
Well, um, when we first got the quotes, um, each one, Thorpe and Nat's Heat and Coolin went out to give us quotes. So those are their recommended, um, quotes going out viewing. Thorpe came up with thirty-two.
Thirty-two?
Thirty-two, thirty, yeah.
Thirty-two kilowatt.
Okay.
And that was thirty-eight thousand three hundred. And Nat's Heat and Coolin, their recommendation was twenty-four KW for fifteen thousand three sixty-four eighty. So when I spoke, I asked Johnny, I said, Johnny, these aren't matching. He said, but those are recommended. So they, one may feel twenty-four and the other company may feel thirty-two by going out evaluating. So I spoke with Scott and he said that we do have to get another twenty-four from, um, from Thorpe and a thirty-two from Nat's to make sure we get, you know, matching apples to apples on one.
Denise, Paige is also.
Generator are you talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Paige is saying that they need the other quote for the fence?
Yes, I have, I have to go there.
You sent those to Paige.
We need to approve it. We need to prove the lowest bidder for the fence. The print, it never got approved. That's what I'm saying.
It's your.
You have a PO on the fence?
We use half of them.
I have the.
So there's the generator we were talking, you were talking about then, we were talking.
How old is that one?
Oh, I'm proud of it.
If you've got a budget line item, then the board doesn't have to approve it. She has to issue a PO for it and she has to have proper documents to issue. So she got the proper documents for the PO.
So you were talking about the generator then when we were speaking, not the fence?
Now, now we're talking about the fence. We got the second quote. Once we received the second quote, I did the PO. And then starting on. So I'll give you the second quote. I, I thought I had sent it to you, but I do have, I want to get the other one.
As long as, as long as they have a budget on, approved on a front end, that's like giving permission for you to spin out of that line.
I'm not, I'm, I'm no electrical expert by any means, but I do, I have concerns about the twenty-four KW with the amount of equipment that's gonna be in there. I mean.
Yeah, that was, that was my thought.
Robbie, do you?
Thirty-two, so Nat's Heat is supposed to send over this morning, but they haven't already upped a quote on the thirty-two. Cause they're gonna tie in the gates on the fence to the generator.
I mean, that's.
I'd rather get the price on both of them.
Let, let me ask a question, cause, um. It's already out there that one of them did the thirty-eight for the thirty-two and twenty-four for the fifteen. So if I was to bid now on the thirty-two, knowing that somebody already bid the thirty-eight, then I'm gonna bid lower than the thirty-eight, well, I can get it. Do that make sense?
Yeah.
If, if the information is already put out there.
Yeah, did you put, did we tell them? Yeah, it's pretty competitive.
I know what you're saying. I have a, I understand. But this is what we have. I was told when I asked Johnny that I needed to get a second quote, um, another one. That's why I didn't do it, because he says, Denise, when you coming out recommending something, that's their recommendation of the size that they need. So this should have been legitimate. That's what I was told.
I, I, I ain't got a problem with that, but what I'm saying, if I was Thorpe and I had to bid on the, the thirty-two and the bid is already thirty-eight, I'm gonna bid thirty-six. Do that make sense?
Go call them, get them now while we're in the bidding to be good.
That's true. Get it now. Cause they don't know.
I have a question. Um, does these prices, is it just for installation? You, did you ask for just a product for just the generators itself?
That's, that's all they include.
That's a question.
Is it just installation and price?
Solenics, battery pack, gas lines, the electrical, generator, everything.
So you can call right now and see if you can get it?
I called, I called for it.
For it to get out there?
So you don't need to call both of them?
I, I, I don't, I don't.
So you're saying that don't even get the one for the twenty-four, just get the one for the thirty-two?
Twenty-four is. Uh, that's why I was asking for.
I'm just trying to do it the proper way legally.
The reason why I was asking did it include the services and not just the product? Because if you have apples to apples, you're comparing two generators, but they're not comparing apples to apples. They're asking for a service to install a generator. They made a recommendation, so it could, if, if that's the reason, you could, um, say, okay, this is the whole inclusive recommendation for these two companies.
They, they got it on there, but, but they asking.
That's, that's the difference with recommendations. That's what Johnny was explaining to me. If you go in and, and evaluate and say, my thoughts is a twenty-four, another company go in and says thirty-two, that's their evaluation and their recommendations of that building because we going in freshly started it.
But you're still not comparing apples to apples.
That's true. That's what I was trying to find out.
So we need to get a price.
Yeah.
The last thing we need is to put a twenty-four KW generator in that building. And it not be enough to pull, and now normal dispatch is down.
Yeah.
That's not gonna be good for anybody.
Nat's Heat and Coolin called this morning, they were in the process of sending over a quote for a thirty-two. I wanted to get it approved through the board so when they send it over, you know, we could go with the cheapest one and move forward with it. You know, because they have to put the, the gate, the, the gate to the generator.
So have they gone out, Nat's, well, they have gone out because they gave a price of only twenty-four. So you think they'll have that price now?
They supposed to be sending that over when I talked to them this morning. I just.
Can you go check and see before we do anything else?
You can come back. We've got a few more.
We got other things we can. Let me, let me ask a question too. Brad, what is that, what's that generator that we already have? What kilowatts is it?
What you need is a standby generator. Well, we have, they're not standby generators. The way you do it is you, you have to put a generator in for future product. A twenty-four K is not liquid cooled generator. Your thirty-two and your thirty-six, we normally recommend those because it carries a load under stress, especially when you're talking about AC units running, uh, all that equipment. So you want a bigger generator for the building. So the recommendation would be a thirty-two or thirty-six liquid cooled. They have to be liquid cooled because your twenty-four KWs, they're air cooled. And pretty much they gonna probably run off natural gas if you got it, or, uh, if you don't have propane. I think, Robert, is natural gas out there? So they would be running off natural gas.
Cause it need to be a liquid?
No, it need to be liquid cooled.
So is, is that liquid cooled?
Yeah, the twenty-four KWs, they're by liquid cooled, they're air cooled. That's the difference when you're talking about the exercise and also the, uh, what, what, why you say go board on that, for that. Uh, do you know the AC, do you, do you see units on there? No, I know the. No, the twenty-four are air cooled, I know that.
Thirty-two, is it liquid?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Brad, what brand is that?
Cause I'm, I'm saying, what's.
This is the generator?
No, what, what brand is it? Is it a Kohl or what? Yeah, they supposed to put a brand, is it Kohl or a generator? So then you can go out there, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Departmental reports.
Good morning. Denise Price, purchase broker Adams County. Um, I would like to trade a procurement card and travel card across the minutes for February for approval.
You heard the request? Can I get a motion? Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes happy.
Okay, and on February twenty-seventh, we had the bid for the six-month loan department supplies. And I will be going over that in a few. Okay, first we have MMC materials, um, they are formerly St. Catherine. Three thousand PSI sub concrete, a hundred and sixty-six dollars per cubic yard. Thirty-five, that thirty-five, uh, hundred PSI, a hundred and seventy-one cubic yards. Four thousand PSI, a hundred and seventy-six cubic yards. Two percent calcium, hundred and fourteen dollars cubic yard. Flowable field, a hundred and forty dollars per cubic yard. P gravel grout, a hundred and seventy-five dollars per cubic yard. Fuel charge, thirty-five dollars a truck, small load to feed less than five cubic yards, two hundred dollars a load. They were the only bid. For the asphalt, we only had one bid, eight pack. Contractors mix, one hundred and five dollars per ton. Service course, a hundred and five dollars per ton. Tac coat per gallon, five dollars. Lay down per job, one to one and a half, fifty to two hundred tons, two hundred dollars per ton. One and a half to two inch, fifty to two hundred tons, two hundred dollars per ton. One to one and a half, two hundred and one to five hundred tons, ninety dollars per ton. One and a half to two inch, two hundred and one to five hundred tons, ninety dollars per ton. One to one and a half, five hundred and one tons and up, fifty-five dollars per ton. One and a half to two inch, five hundred and one tons and up, fifty-three dollars per ton. Leveling overlay, one to one and a half, a hundred and fifty dollars per ton. One to one and, one and a half to two inch, a hundred and fifty dollars per ton. Patent overlay, four inch, zero to one hundred square feet, no bid. Four inch, one hundred square feet and above, no bid. Six inch, one hundred square feet or more, a hundred dollars per ton. And that's all we get for asphalt, as I said. The last one we have is for the culverts. We had three different bids. The first one is GNO Supply Company, twelve inch poly pipe, double walls, seven thousand thirty cent per square feet. Fifteen inch, nine sixty-nine per square feet. Eighteen inch, twelve eighty-six per square feet. Twenty-four inch, twenty-one fifty-two per square feet. Thirty inch, thirty dollars and eighty-five cents per square feet. Thirty-six inch, thirty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cent per square foot. The van, twelve inch, thirteen forty-eight per square foot. Fifteen inch, twenty-two forty-four per square foot. Eighteen inch, thirty-eight, uh, twenty-five per square foot. Twenty-four inch, five fifty-three dollars and ninety-four cent per square foot. Thirty inch, a hundred and twenty-five dollars, thirty-nine cent per square foot. Thirty-six inch, a hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-six cent per square foot. Metal sixteen gauge, twelve inch, seventeen dollars and ten cent per square foot. Fifteen inch, twenty fifty-two per square foot. Eighteen inch, twenty-five sixty-five per square foot. Twenty-one inch, twenty-nine and seven per square foot. Twenty-four inch, thirty-two forty-nine per square foot. Thirty inch, forty-one oh four per square foot. Thirty-six inch, forty-nine fifty-nine per square foot. Forty-two inch, fifty-eight fourteen per square foot. Metal fourteen gauge, twelve inch, twenty dollars and fifty-two cent per square foot. Fifteen inch, twenty-five sixty-five per square foot. Eighteen inch, thirty dollars and seventy-eight cents per square foot. Twenty-one inch, thirty-five ninety-one per square foot. Twenty-four inch, forty-one oh four per square foot. Thirty inch, fifty-one thirty per square foot. Thirty-six inch, sixty-one fifty-six per square foot. Forty-two inch, seventy-one eighty-two per square foot. Roll pipe, twelve inch, single wall, seven fifty-three per square foot. Fifteen inch, single walls, ten forty-eight per square foot. We have two other bidders, Nat's Cover and Southern Cover. I'll go ahead and state those, but GNO had the lowest and the best. Um, do you want me to go ahead and go through all of those with Nat's Cover and Southern Cover as well?
GNO's the lowest.
GNO was the lowest. And they are not local, but they, um, gave us a written notice. They will be able to supply our needs within twenty-four to forty-eight hours and no charge for the delivery. But if not, we would have to go with the, if they can't, we have to go with the next lowest bidder that's local.
Which was?
The next one, it would depend on which product it is. I think it was, uh.
Depends on their both?
Yeah, it's different things.
But it's gonna depend on who's what, you know, you just have to look at whatever you need that day. You made a fifteen by thirty. And GNO can't get it here within twenty-four, forty-eight dollars, then we'll have to go to the next lowest bidder on the sheet, which we have.
Do you anticipate an issue getting covered?
Man guaranteed us, he said he'd have it here. Said we gotta get located on our cover anyhow. You know, it takes up seventy-two hours once we do it. So once I go out and look at it, we dog, he said it'd be here. If not, then we just go back to our local.
Okay.
But they were a good bit cheaper than I was.
Yeah, a lot more cheaper than the other two.
Okay.
And they doing free delivery too. So we need to.
Yeah, I need, actual recommendation.
Yes, yes, it. GNO suppliers, my recommendation for the lowest and best we get.
Okay. So is that all of them?
That's it.
You heard the request? Can I get a motion? Motion by supervisor Hutchins. Second by supervisor Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes happy.
Okay, we'll come back about the, um, generator and how to get that second quote for you, Paige.
Good morning. I've got, uh, on our home grant, cash request number five. In the amount of, for cop construction. For John Thompson's home, completion, eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars. And then for a hundred percent completion on Malita Pickett's home, seventy-nine thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And then for administrative fees, nine thousand dollars. That all comes out of the grant. And this will be contingent, um, I don't actually have to eat inspector reports to be the one, be the homeowner just. This, this will be contingent. I can't submit this to the, this city home corporation without those reports. So I'm just trying to keep this thing rolling. And that's all I have.
I got a question.
Sure.
What about Ms. Barbara Smith? Ms. Barbara Smith?
She's next.
She's next.
That's right. She'll be the last homeowner.
Okay. Some will.
Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes happy.
All right. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Lynette Smith, Southwest Plan. Under the, um, American Rescue Plan Act Home Improvement Project for Adams County, I have five completed, um, home applicants. I have invoices from the contractor, administrative invoice, and the, um, home inspector invoice. And I also have to have signatures on the final call certification page for each, uh, homeowner. The homeowners are, would you like me to look here?
Yes, good.
And the district or just the name?
Just the name.
Okay, so the homeowner, I was gonna say, one, um, Cassandra Robinson. Two, Monique Magriff. Three, Evelyn Brooks. Four, Margie Ealy. And five, Linda Cleveland. And Paige, I will get you all of the, I'll scan you all the invoices.
So you don't have to wait now?
I have, I have to scan them to you, cause I don't have to get the signatures. I have, I have to scan them to you, so I don't have to get the signatures.
Oh, yeah.
Can I get a motion?
So.
Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, eyes out.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Can I copy that now, Paige, anymore?
Good morning, Board. Seven mile veteran service officer for the county. I only have one thing, I need to update you guys on, on March twenty-seventh, and on the steps of City Hall, they're doing a Vietnam Veterans Recognition. And they just, they just need some veterans, some local veterans that Americans don't recognize, and they, they laughing a lot. March twenty-seventh.
Did you say City Hall?
Yes.
Can you also give that to her there, so she could put that on our calendar?
Yes.
That all you had, son?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
We have one, our request is today, the special station of the county.
Wait, 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 I'm sorry, we need to stop, we need to wait till Ricky gets back in here, we don't have a board.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sure.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Hutchinson.
Sorry.
Mr. Stacey, Adams County Department, kind of part of that process, we have one request today. T-Mobile requests permit to place additional equipment on existing Crown Castle USA Incorporated site located at eleven Liberty Road. Project will include placement of six antennas, six radio frequency units, two hybrid cables, two equipment cabinets, and associated equipment. Placement of this additional equipment with two T-Mobile service portions of Natchez and out along Liberty Road. Orders and requirements have been met and fees paid, and request the board to approve this T-Mobile for being out of possession.
You heard the request, can I get a motion? Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, eyes out.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Tykeon McComber for Adams County. I would like to ask permission to travel to a spring educational workshop next month, April fourteenth through fifteenth, in the region of Mississippi.
Do you have the...
It's in his business.
Oh, there's two travels. All right, Kentucky, Ridsland, Mississippi, you heard the request. Second motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, eyes out.
I also would like to cover for the board, that you know our county's receivable partner is no longer with us as he's been there, we've been assuming the duties, so I've been in communication with the county attorney and the county administrator in reference to doing an increase for my staff, and I can move in reference to that.
That would be Delisa, Tabitha, Robin, Sharon, and yourself. You heard the request. Can I get a motion? Can I get a motion? No motion. All right. Thank you.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I'm coming to report a change of status for one of my employees and a couple of them. DeKarr Winston, status of being changed from full-time detention officer to part-time. I do have a page, let's come on right here, if y'all need, should have one.
Pay rate change, you said just going from...
Well, not, not a pay rate change, his holiday rate is the same, but his, his status has changed from full-time to part-time.
Was checked, pay rate.
Status, was it better, status changed from full-time to part-time?
Part-time.
Part-time. His hours gonna change.
His hours are gonna change, yes. His hours are gonna drop.
Okay, you heard the request?
So.
Second, motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, eyes out.
Next item, I'm sending Xavier Davis to training in Jones County, he'll be traveling on the thirteenth, and he'll be down there for a couple of weeks, little weekend. Do you have a form there for...
Travel, you said?
Yes. Travel, tuition for school, lodging, I do have those forms here if you don't have a copy of those.
How about see if any are...
Do you need...
Yes, sir, they're not in this folder.
I guess we could share.
Hey, mother here?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
All right, Xavier Davis, correctional officer training, Law of Mississippi, registration six fifty, seven hundred and eight dollars bills. In hotel. Dollar mileage, total seventeen sixty-one seventy-six. Can I get a motion?
So.
Second, motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, eyes out.
Final item, I'm the vice president of Mississippi Association of Juvenile Potentioned Professionals. We were meeting monthly, but now we're meeting quarterly. I was told that I didn't have to request travel on that since it's something that happens every quarter. Try not to put that form in, because I can't, I was doing it every month, and y'all say, well, you don't have to come back and request it, since it's something you have every, every month, every quarter.
Hold on one second, Mr. Attorney, could you step in and, and, and help us out a bit?
Under our policy for travel, anytime you're leaving the county, you're supposed to get board approval, that's just the policy, I'm not aware of the board telling you otherwise.
That's what I take you, paying something happen.
I don't have a problem doing this every quarter.
Yeah, it mandates that you work packing your course and study from point, and so it gives you that protection.
I'm saying, but I was told that I didn't have to question travel, and I said, well, some of it we've done regularly, and y'all know about it already. So, I mean, if that's changed, then I'll change and it's hard, you know, question travel, so.
I mean, he can get reimbursement for his travel, that's a lot of statute, but he can get blessed now. But he can certainly get reimbursed.
Where we at, so request me?
Reimbursement for the last time.
And you, usually if it's not that far, for somewhere like Jackson, I didn't even put in travel for that, right? I just did that, figured out my pocket, it's not that much money, right? The last one I put in, I went to Hattiesburg, and anything that's far away, I go ahead and put in for my, my reimbursement, so.
Yeah, if you leave from this job site, then you should get travel, you get approved from that. And that's a, I mean, that's everyone, sheriffs, deputies and all that, they leave all over the place all the time, they all get blessed.
So I'm not gonna be reimbursed for the trip?
You can definitely get reimbursed. We can't go back and say, bless you, go travel, but we can definitely reimburse it, statute allows us to do that.
So I will...
That protects, protects you, so.
All right, so I will see that going forward.
But you can get, and you should get reimbursed, even if it's to Jackson or whatever.
Right.
You're entitled to that, so. You should get, it's not fair to you to pay for your own travel, that's the IRS and the whole...
All in favor, all opposed, eyes out.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Sheriff, last man standing.
I just wanted to check with Scott or Paige, what is our next step to get the soil testing done now?
Well, being the contract or the bid need to be signed, have it been signed? And then we turn it into the professional and they start the process.
Okay, you turn it into them, we don't have anything to do with it.
So you send it straight to the customer.
That gets us to the next step, to be able to, to give to Buddy John. They're, they're gonna turn it in.
What's that?
You just said you were gonna turn it in?
Hey, do I get a sentence?
Good morning, Board. Mr. Middleton, before you should be a waste tire grant payer, request for eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Did you set it up here or did you put it... Go ahead, I'll look.
The next thing I have is illegal dump site grant, I'll move money from the officer to the cleanup, since that W one four, and then illegal dump site grant, just doing the same grant, we're just gonna move money over to finish using the money, and then we'll close that grant out, we got a request here, close that grant out, twenty-two thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars.
You heard the request?
So.
Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion?
Yeah. You say from the officer?
To the cleanup, like, first one I expected, and, you know, sprayed.
You gonna use that and put it in?
Put it, it's in the same grant, we're just using it where we expend it.
Go ahead. All in favor, all opposed, eyes out. Okay, here's reallocation, twenty-six eighty-two thirty.
Should be, yeah, that's a twenty-two thousand, six sixteen, that's to close the grant out, is that what you said?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Twenty-two thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars, agreement number is W fourteen twenty-three.
And the other one, it's a paper request of eight seventy-nine.
Yep, got it right here. Can I get a motion on the waste tire there? Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, eyes out. Yes, sir.
All right. I guess Mr. Slover and Mr. Middleton, the tree and Dunbar, have we got any, any, I mean?
Yeah.
We got some paperwork, you know, out of my budget.
We had communication with them, we sent a MAN to them, and then their attorney contacted us, and I said, well, here's what it is, and explained it to them, I said they had a burning permit and all this, we requested it, doesn't appear that we could find one, so, I mean, we're demanding it, and I told them, if anyone said payment plan or something, let us know.
Yeah, so, you know, when all this happened, we were told there was a burning permit, Mr. Bradford was told there was a burning permit, and, you know, we had paid contract to cut the tree there.
They were working on the weekend too.
Oh, there was some...
On the road. This is not normal.
So, from what we've gathered thus far, we don't have any proof of a burning permit. So, this property already started this fire, I think, I think it needs to be pretty stern, I mean, I think there needs to be a time frame, thirty days or...
That's it, same.
Okay, be better, to reimburse us for coming through.
It's like, what, five or six thousand dollars?
Fifty-four, fifty-nine, thirty-nine, and that's, you know, with the contractor, with the county going out, doing hot, we went out four different times, you know, hauling and moving and getting it off, so the fire, once we got it down.
So Dunbar Road, I'm not having you...
You say the, you say the home...
The homeowner...
I wanna have to reimburse us.
A new homeowner started brush fire, thinking it was controlled fire, got out of control, caught fire to a tree that's right on the county right of way, and the road crew had to hire a contractor to come cut down the burning trees, so it wouldn't fall on the road and, you know...
Off crossroad, and the neighbor had kept something else on fire across the street.
Y'all might, might have been the last minute when we talked about it.
I got you.
Fire department went out there six times for this one tree.
And you deemed it was county right of way and you...
And we have choice tonight.
So, the homeowner have to reimburse us that much?
Fifty-four hundred dollars.
And, and is it gonna be in installments, or how, how, how do we do that?
If he'll reach out to us and give us the method of payment, I can report back to the board.
But depends on...
If he tells me he's not gonna pay.
Now he won't play.
Yeah.
Because he didn't play very well to start.
So...
We already, we think he's, we have no proof that he had a permit, even though he said he had a permit. We've asked if, you know, we, no one can find a permit on it, so.
So if he decide that he's not gonna cooperate, then what happened?
It's up to the board, we can go after it, settle it. We might go after it criminally, I don't know if that's a crime or not, so.
So this tree was endangering the, the health and welfare of the community, because it, it might fall and, and, and do whatever, right?
Right, and that's, if y'all remember Dunbar Road, it's that tree on that bin that was kinda hanging.
It fell, it fell on crossroad into the neighbor's yard, and neighbor was complaining, bad.
The whole neighborhood was...
Yeah.
The smoke was, it was, okay.
All right, next thing I have, that Miss Brandy gave to me this morning, the cards for the board, and the people cutting our roads and things, we've been working on that, Scott and Brandy, myself, Meg. So Brandy had some cards made up, so if we see a contractor working that, we got a permit, no, he's not, we hand him that card, then they know they got it within their company to get a permit. So I think we've hit it in the right direction with that. I see Mr. Ford's back here, but Lofton Lane, contractor started on it, they should be about complete with it, looks real good. They're moving the church here next on EWP side into Brooklyn, but Lofton Lane really looks good. So, other thing I have is Murdrove, we do have the temporary bridge in place, we started last Thursday, worked Thursday, Friday, hit it in place, put door rails up on it today, once we get it completed, before we're gonna go out and sort it, inspect it, and let us know it's okay, but...
I talked to that Seth guy from Wildlife and Fisheries, he said that he's gonna get with me today, the timeline, when we get the, either, either a right of way or fifty-year use, he was under the impression that everything was good to go, I suppose. I don't know why you would think that, considering I've been, you know, moaning and groaning about getting a fifty-year permit, but anyway, so he'll get right on it.
They sent her down to look what we were doing, their guys worked for them last week, took some pictures, sent them back, said everything was beautiful, what we're doing, so. They sent her down to look what we were doing, their guys worked for them, uh, last week, took some pictures, sent them back, said everything was beautiful, what we're doing, so. We should have that complete this week and ready to move forward.
Will that other bridge be removed?
Not by us, it will be removed by the contractor that gets awarded the bid to do the bridge, we don't have anything to remove, we just. So maybe that, uh, the state is, I was writing about that bridge, matter of fact, I'm having to close it today, so.
Imagine that.
Yeah.
Stone Colafet will go.
That's right.
We'd wait three years.
That's all I have, unless y'all have something for me.
Mr. President, I, I, I need an update on, uh, Johnson's story, a bit later you called me over the weekend, and when you spoke, when I did, looked at.
Yes, I tell where the E W P, for, look for E W P, where she had a wash it up, I had, I got fifty thousand out there, then you called, we got it on the board, we're not under a vent for submitting for E W P, um.
Is it bad?
Yeah.
I agree with you.
Yeah, it's, uh, you know, we're not under a vent, but it's, it can get a lot worse, you know, uh, but it is bad.
Do you know any, for you, Don Rick? I'm done. Hi, for you, Don.
Yeah, I'm done.
Do you know anything about a water leak on Lake Montrose Road, where somebody was trying to fix a water leak, and y'all had gone out and patched? Property owner was trying to fix a water leak? Would you go right through there when you get a chance, buddy? It's affecting the road somewhere, on the.
I heard something, the landowner doesn't shower the road, they're trying to fix a water leak.
Yeah.
I thought we put some material in that after they made it, but I would check.
Check that, or get to him and check it.
Some weeks ago.
Yeah, but it's not repaired, or they dug it back out.
Yeah, a couple weeks ago, they might have dug it back up.
And then also, um, Robin's Lake, do we have any updates on that?
I mean, we need to proceed and.
I mean, you know, part of this total plan is why we didn't pave over that, was we were waiting on, we were gonna replace those coves, and I, you know, keep getting a few phone calls here and there about it still being white rock.
We just keep it in, it's sixteen, we just keep patching it to sixteen, I mean, that's what it does.
You, you need to proceed and then we can.
Y'all wanna go ahead and just overlay it, and whatever we do, just have it reimbursed all of it?
Well, get what's his name, the previous contractor, to go ahead and do that work and make the repairs, we need to go ahead and do that.
We need to go ahead and replace the pipe?
Mm-hmm. Yes, cause, I mean, that you showed that you were damaged, I thought we talked about that.
And nobody else said move forward, I.
Replace the pipe with?
Robin's Lake, remember that?
Where, where money came from?
Well, we got a mold suit with J K and S pending, and, you know, but that in the meantime doesn't stop us from going ahead and doing the work, so.
So when you say replace the pipe?
Elevator going down?
Well, I mean, uh, what, what kind of price you been talking about?
Oh, a lot.
And where the money gonna come from?
Oh, a lot.
Could you?
I mean.
It's like one forty-five or one fifty?
A hundred?
Yeah, a hundred dollar forty-five.
Look more than that, I think, yeah, I, I, I can get the contractor to come back and revisit and put this in for us, I can get, we come back, give us a, well, they had a hard price, I can bring it back to the board the next board meeting and see, I said, I didn't know you wanted to move forward, I, I guess it was understanding point.
Yeah, I thought that.
I didn't know.
Mr. President, let me ask you a question, uh, um, I mean, I agree that it need to be fixed, but. Is it me, uh, spending that kind of money, don't they need to come before the board and we need to vote on this or something, man, just to spend a hundred and, two hundred and some thousand dollars that we don't even know where it's gonna come from?
Yeah, I mean, I.
We talked, we talked about.
We talked about.
But.
Do it.
Talk to the contractor, bring back to next meeting and.
Oh, I know it's been going on, but that's my first time, he ain't say, he said that he told you to go ahead on with, I ain't never heard that part.
Well, I didn't say that, I thought that we had come up with that conclusion, but obviously unmistakable, so, you know, up and then brought it up.
And I'll get with contractor, we'll get back next board meeting and, and, uh, we could have a harder number while we get back.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning, board, everybody. I just got a couple things, uh, up there on the road, we did pretty good, you know, we spared this fast, uh, weekend, uh, but twenty-three other counties, uh, received some type of damage, we did have some fatalities across the state. Um, my team, a couple of volunteers went to Jeff Davis yesterday to help out, uh, to do damage assessment on that.
Jeff Davis, Kim?
Jeff Davis, yesterday's. Yeah, they, the attorney came up for that way to, uh, walk off, Jefferson Davis, Smith County, officer there. So we was able to get over there, uh, help those out, uh, do damage assessment on those. With that being said, uh, as we prepare for, you know, uh, our events, we wanna make sure that we have things in place over here just in case, uh, uh, something like that happens. So, uh, we worked well with the state yesterday, I know I talked to Robin, uh, he was prepared to go ahead, uh, get cleaning crews down the entire town, uh, when it happened, I did reach out to Vice President, letting know that, uh, when we have events like that, and there's a declaration, they do, uh, receive powers, uh, for other counties that wasn't affected to be able to travel like that. So, uh, I appreciate Robin for being on stand by man, uh, for that. Uh, with that being said.
Excuse me, let, let me access, Scott, shouldn't we put in place right now, or vote for this, that when something like that happen, our crew can do that, just to, um, have this safety, you know, that approved by the board, not without us knowing, because I didn't know these things was happening, but it would be good for us to make a motion to put it in place when these things happen, that they can do this.
It, it was already put in place?
It was put in place.
I don't know if you mean to do it to you all, cause Joe did it, right back when he was here. Yeah, what the years ago, did he?
Yeah, probably updated or whatever.
Yeah, it's probably just, just updating. So, yeah, is, in case something happened to you all, you all would be covered.
Yeah, we'd be covered under county, going traveling and doing.
Right, exactly, I'd like to make a motion that we do that.
Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
Appreciate supervisor. Uh, next, uh, request is travel this inside the district, uh, to my district meeting on March the twentieth, uh, to Burke, Burke Hagan for our annual, uh, quarterly, uh, E M A directed meeting.
You heard the request, Mr. Bradford, create a motion, motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
Okay, the next one is, uh, travel to Camp Shelby, uh, March the twenty-seventh for our logistic response summit with Nema, just to turn around one day.
Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Uh, the next one is a rear travel, uh, to Charlotte, North Carolina for my national radiological conference, that's April the twenty-first to the twenty-fifth for myself. Thank you, Eric.
Yeah, it was, it was up here at some point, I saw it. I guess it got lost in the shelf. Here it is, I got it. Um, it's for you.
Just me on that, just me.
Okay, you heard the request? Second by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
Uh, the next one is for our Mississippi Department of Preparations, that we do a year, still be at the IP casino in the bucks in Mississippi, for Ms. Connie Mason and myself, and that's May twentieth and twenty-third.
It's, uh, five hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents each. Could I get a, uh, motion?
I think supervisor Gray will be attending that, but also, so we're just gonna go ahead and. Yeah, I made that, I make a motion.
Motion by supervisor Hutchins, can I get your second, I'll second. All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
Now, if you win, anybody supervisor, go back to the E M Ls. Last thing I got, uh, Ms. Pam, uh, she resigned her position on March, uh, March the thirteenth, uh, and I asked her, she's the new person we had for operation.
Did you get a report?
She didn't make ninety days, so she resigned, okay, and I'm not gonna feel opposed at this time.
We settled at resignation?
Do we have a resignation?
Yes, she did, I turned it into H R already, I just, she had it.
So, don't leave the supervisor.
I ain't going on what's that?
Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Yeah, I think you get a fact.
Good morning, board, uh, I have two requests, and one, um, is the information I can provide, uh, for Morgantown Road Phase One, we submitted a contract, uh, for the engineering fees for Phase One. And I submitted it, and I was asked if they'd approve, can you give Scott's review for Phase One redesign to ask us to do, uh, for Phase One of Morgantown Road.
And I've actually reviewed it and sent over back to George and he's looking back at this.
You want to know?
He's looking at it, George, he's reviewed it, he said.
Oh, you reviewed that?
And I've sent it back I M S, Rod's looking at it, he's backing down this week.
He's coming back and coming back this week.
Motion by supervisor Hutchins, can I get your second, second by supervisor Gray, discussion?
Uh, Mr. Turner, did you make any changes?
Yes, sir, and I sent you all an addendum.
Okay, uh, uh, I wanna amend that pending that I M S approved the changes that was made by our chairman.
Any, uh, any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
Um, second thing I have is I received a call from M C W for, I guess, Horn, who's representative for the M C W I grant, and they're still requesting that the county uses the M C W I grant that was awarded to them. And so they asked us to provide them with a list of projects or, um, equipment that the county would like to purchase, as long as it falls in line with water or storm drainage. And we just submit to them those projects, and they can tell us whether or not they will be approved of funding, as long as it does not exceed the forty-one thousand four hundred and forty dollars for the project, which according to the county will be responsible for half of it. So they did, they called me on Friday, asked me to present that to you guys today, uh, so that they can have, they, they don't, they don't wanna send the money back to the state, so they would like the county to use it.
And it can be used for what?
Anything, for any water or storm drainage. So that's project or equipment purchase, as long as it does not exceed forty-one thousand four hundred and forty dollars.
Do we have any equipment we need to purchase, Russ?
Under what, forty-one thousand?
Yes.
About ten bucks more for that.
So any of you who want, they, they would not pay more than half of that forty-one thousand four hundred.
So they gonna pay half?
Yes. That's how you use the I R grant.
And it'd be used for what now?
Anything water related or storm drainage related.
Is there any talk of cove plant or anything? Pipe, that anything with, uh, fire hives, things like that?
Well, you guys, you can just come over.
I've got, no, I've got over a bunch of fire hives across right now, we speak for some fire hives and the damage out there now.
Well, you send me that list, and then I will send it over to the representative who was in contact with me, and I'll see if that is, is, is applicable.
Okay.
And the last thing I have is earlier, um, Mr. Dollar talked about the E W P C zero, C zero four four Lofton Lane, um, the contractor had submitted their first pay request, was on recommending the payment for the contract invoice number one, in the amount of sixty-one thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty cents. As well as requesting payment for the engineering design and the C and I services that have taken place thus far, in the amount of twenty thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-four cents.
You heard the request? Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
And so, Ms. Dollar's already given up, they on that one, so there any questions for me in relation to anything?
I got one, and I know you probably have, I, I spoke with the contractor, cause I bet I want to breathe down there, and he said he's running into more and more borderline gas problems, if you spoke with him about that, he won't try to set up some kind of meeting, I don't know if you.
Lofton Lane?
No, sure.
On Morgantown.
No, we can set up a meeting.
I mean, has he spoken to you about that?
He talked to, to.
Cause I, I mean, I just spoke with him last week down there on it, he said, you know, they're giving the leaves out there.
He keep being service line, he's not the main one.
But, but that's what I'm saying, he just, he could just give you the. Scott, I spoke with you, didn't? Yeah.
Do you have the invoices for this paperwork?
Yes, ma'am. Are you any question?
Yeah, I have a question, um, I don't know, if you all have go, gone and made the application, or had made the application for care of road in Martin Luther King, have that application been submitted? Even though the funding is held up, we need to go ahead and submit, they suggested in Congress, maybe we go ahead and submit the application. So I wanted to know.
For the E W P, huh?
On the E W P for care of road in Martin Luther King.
I don't submit those applications.
Who submits the application?
I don't submit, I get.
To U S D A office.
We get, we get it.
You give it submitted, okay, yeah, they suggest that we go ahead and submit it, even if, if the funding is held up.
Held up, submitted.
Submitted.
So what happened, uh, what's happening in the past, so, so once we get the free award, then I submit, I submit all the free awards I want, and so the last set I said, she asked me to go ahead and submit it to her, so she just holding those free awards in place, so once the funding is released, she can go ahead and process. So she that I've already.
All right.
Thank you, Austin.
Thank you.
Do you have, do I need any votes? Oh, okay.
And while I'm on here, can I go ahead and get approval to submit the re, the reimbursement documents for this payment, for, for Lofton Lane, for the county?
First by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion?
How many did?
It's eighty percent of whatever.
Seven percent.
Seventy.
Seven percent.
Like eighty better.
All right, all in favor? All opposed?
Good morning, board. How's everybody doing today?
All right.
Before I get started, I wanna take time to, uh, thank Ms. David Hudson for all the work she's done, the one tired asleep. I know between me and her, we do a lot of texting, a lot of talking on the C J C C committee, and so I just wanna know, I appreciate her efforts, and I thank her this morning, that she don't get pinched, I did many of my little friends, but I. I also wanna keep Tyler, I want everybody to, uh, keep Tyler Town up in prayer, Tyler Town and all of us affected by the, by storms up in prayer, you know, we have been truly blessed in this community. To miss a lot of those storms that were headed our way, and I see people online who are disappointed about it, I'm not, everybody gonna be disappointed by our community not being destroyed, so I just wanna, just, just wanna, Lord, everybody know, I'm grateful. Uh, I do have trash reports for you this morning, a few of them kinda light this week, cause of the extra duty act. But District One had twenty bags, District Two forty-nine bags. But District One had twenty bags, District Two forty-nine bags, District Three forty-four bags, District Four fifteen bags, District Five eighteen bags, for a total of two hundred and nine bags. And this was the last time, I believe, we picked up from the courthouse. We, uh, got thirty-eight bags from over there and just forty-four sanitation twenty-eight. And all the losses, a hundred and ninety-seven, so, but that was the last time. So I'm very grateful for that, with. And you all know, another county is in need of a fire investigator, if I'm not mistaken. So, Bloody Frank was the previous fire investigator. And so I, I need you all's signature so we can send him back to training on eight fifteenth down in Hasburg to the, to the academy and get re-certified. Since the air of skill is no longer here. So y'all.
You heard the request. Motion by Supervisor Hutchins. Second by Supervisor Gray, any discussion?
I bring all these up there at one time to, uh, oh, okay. Is it done?
All in favor? All opposed?
DA Cotton was able to recover some money back from, from force on some accounts. And Ms. Watson, I believe, might already have this, um, one-one-three-zero-zero-three-three-nine. It was in the amount of eleven thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars, twenty-seven six, uh, twenty-six cents. And we're asking, we can't have that money deposited till the board approves that we get deposited. So, I'm asking that that money be approved to be deposited and transferred over to, uh.
Interprism?
No, this ain't, this ain't interprism. No, not quite. Some money come back from there too, though. Uh, to one-one-three-two-two-one-six-one-three.
You heard the request, Sharon. Motion by Supervisor Hutchins. Second by Supervisor Gray, any discussion?
What is this flashhead?
This is money from cases that we saw restitutional for whatever damages we caused or, or whatever kind of money we spent on. You know, the DA, DA's could do that. DA Cotton did, and he was able to give us eleven thousand, something like eleven thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars, twenty-seven cents back. So, we definitely appreciate him for that.
All in favor? All opposed?
Myself and Attorney Slower, um, talked on the phone this weekend with David, Dade, with about the health plan, the health plan called Freedom. And, uh, he can explain a little bit of it, but at the end of the day, I think it may save the county between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars on insurance a year, uh, for inmates, so I, I give to him that part.
Yeah, the Affordable Care Act allows, uh, almost like a loophole, we hate to say it, but allows plaintiffs to get insurance that is supplemented by the federal government. And a lot of those plaintiffs come into our bail system, and so we qualify. What this organization does is, really no doubt to the county, is tries to match these people, see if they qualify for a plan. And if they do qualify for a plan, then they set them up with health insurance plan. It would cap our out-of-pocket, depending on what the plan is, the plans that they showed us would cap our out-of-pocket at three thousand a year, so, um. And the amount, the, the rates that they were paying were significantly cheaper than your normal rates, I think, for a dollar.
Yeah, like two dollars for prescription meds, zero for this.
We, we may not be able to use them for prescription meds because of the system that we have allows us to maneuver through the Mississippi Pharmaceutical Board. But, uh, as far as catastrophe, surgery, things of that nature, could be potential savings. That's what we're working into. They did send me the MOA, um, and I've not had a chance to, to go through it, but I'd like to, to do it, 'cause it could potentially help us out. We are paying about thirty-five a year on hospital care on inmates. And that's, we take them, we reduce them to the Medicaid rate, send them back, or we just qualify and follow the proper steps and all that, so, um, could be huge savings.
So, we, or you say it takes us under advisement?
Yeah, I'm not ready to present it for, for a request yet. I just thought it was sounding really promising.
And I emailed to all of you all, see, I'll read what you said, so everybody should have it in their emails.
Uh, go over the part where you said federal government, what, what do, what role do they play in this?
The Affordable Care Act offers a subsidy to cert, insurance plans for low, very, very, very low, might, below the poverty level, low, uh, plans for people.
So, the reason I ask that question is because when we was up in DC, um, my only concern is we need to be careful until we find out what's gonna get cut and what's gonna get funded with the federal government, 'cause right now, there's a whole lot of stuff, uh, supposed to be cut. I don't know if it's gonna be cut, but, uh, I wouldn't bank on nothing from the federal government until, uh, they kinda weed out what they gonna do and what they not gonna do. That's just my opinion.
Absolutely. And part of the plan that we were very concerned about is we didn't wanna be committed to anything, and, and there isn't a commitment. It really is, someone comes in and the sheriff's office submits them to the insurance plan, and if they don't, then nothing happens on it. So if it's not happy with it, we wouldn't, if that's part of the policy.
We can't, no cost is good.
Right.
No cost.
What it does, it basically creates an insurance payer for this, for this group. And the individual is actually liable for it, except when there are in our custody. We're not liable for any premiums, 'cause there are no premiums, but we're liable for stocks anyway.
And they said that even if they get out, if they don't get a job, they are still insured. It's up to them whether they choose to use or not. 'Cause we actually questioned them with the firm, because I wanna know if it was feasible for other people, other than inmates. You know, they, they went around the world on it, but then they got to where they said that if people make less than, I think it was fifteen thousand dollars a year, they are eligible for this insurance. This, this, this particular law has been in place for fourteen years, so it's, it's pretty solid, unless they cut it, so. Uh, the last thing I have is, you know, we have our fishing row that we were supposed to have this weekend, but we canceled due to severe weather. We moved that to April the fifth from eight to twelve at the, uh, State Park, if y'all wanna come out.
What is that?
The, uh, Adams County Sheriff's Office Fishing Row. We're doing a fishing row there for the first time. With the partners, with, with a fishing club, and a lot of kids. And I do wanna thank, um, some of the sponsors. I don't, I don't wanna call their names, 'cause it's my mission, I'm a people fan about it, so I do it. I do it when I have it in front of me, but several people made this happen. And, and I'm truly grateful for them doing that. Last thing I just wanna tell y'all, just in case y'all wanna drop by, Drury Court has a graduation today at one o'clock. So if you all wanna see, uh, people graduating, become a member of society, there you go. That's all I have, that's all I have in question.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, um. Let me say this. I was out the last meeting, and a lot of stuff happened in the last meeting. I'm just gonna say this, um. I received a memorandum from the board attorney on six fourteen twenty-four dealing with the garbage contract. And it says, "Board, Kevin requested that I advise him of options of various issues. He complained with the garbage contract", which I don't have a problem with. I wanna say this. Ms., uh, Melissa Adams, I think that's her name, came before this board and brought to my attention, 'cause I can't speak for now, notice, now other supervisors, that the, uh, that the carrier did not have the proper insurance. And it's kinda confusing because in the same thing, I talked to Scott about this, um. They say in the newspaper, that's all I can go by, 'cause I wasn't really here. County Attorney Scott Slover contacted Friday afternoon, supervisors asked him to get proof of insurance from United Infrastructure after Adams spoke to the board. And the company has proved that, and this is the quote that kinda confused me. What Scott said, "Yes, we have proof of insurance," Slover said. "I believe it, it is within the guidelines of the contract." Now, I don't know if it's in the guidelines. I don't know if it's in the guidelines, but one thing I wanna say is this. Everything happened while we was gone, and my problem is this. I thought that this board had changed the board meeting to the sixth, that Thursday. Now, maybe I'm wrong, uh, 'cause somebody explained to me, how did the board meeting get changed back to the Monday, and it was changed to the sixth? Can anybody explain that to me? Can anybody explain to me? Was it legal? Was it a legal meeting?
It was a legal meeting.
Well, can, can anybody explain how did the, everybody on the board receive information that the meeting was gonna get changed but me, 'cause I ain't received it?
I read it.
So, so wait a minute, hold on, let me, let me help you out. So, in my knowledge of, of, of calling a meeting or, or whatever the case may be, either the president of the board, or the vice president of the board, or three supervisors can call a meeting or whatever. Since we changed the meeting, was that a call meeting, uh, or what?
That was a Monday, statutory Monday meeting. And, I mean, I was not sure whether we were meeting or not. I know the clerk was not sure whether we were meeting or not.
Oh, hold on, Mr. Turner. Now you're really confusing me, 'cause before we left, we changed the meeting to Thursday. So, what you mean, you, you wasn't sure whether we was meeting or not, when the meeting got changed to Thursday?
Well, so, I thought the meeting was changed, and someone asked me if there was a Thursday meeting, and I didn't set the meeting on Monday, so, you know.
Well, how did the meeting get set? Somebody had to set it. I, I, I don't have a problem with it.
This is not me, though.
In my whole time of dealing with anything, I like to be in order. I'm trying to figure out who changed the meeting, and if it wasn't in order. 'Cause seemed like to me it was out of order.
By statute, you always meet the first Monday of every month. And if quorum doesn't show up on that Monday, then the sheriff comes up and declares no, no quorum, and it meets the next day, and so forth, until there is a quorum showed up. So, yeah, I thought that, that was gonna happen until a Thursday. And I don't know where the confusion came from. I can tell it didn't originate from me, so.
By statute, you're right, there's supposed to be a meeting every first. But we knew that. But before we left, with Supervisor Gray and myself being out, we had said we would not meet until that Thursday, so that we would have every board member present. I got a call that moment, five minutes to nine, saying there, there was a meeting set. And I'm saying, uh, how is there a meeting set? Well, we have already approved for a meeting to be that Thursday. So I did jump online because of that fact, leaving out of an important meeting that I was in to get online. I had to get off be, because I had to get back in that meeting. I, I'm on a board that I had to be in, in Washington. So my thing is, a lot of things got approved that I know later found out that we said certain things that we would not do unless all board members was present. We, a lot of things occurred during that meeting without board members being present. That always came from this board, that we wouldn't do certain things unless all board members was present.
Let, let me, let me say this. I went there to meet, and I don't know what happened for the meeting to get changed back to Monday, but somebody sent out an email, uh, on the first. The first was Saturday. It wasn't even a working day for us. An email was sent out about this meeting. 'Cause I went back and checked on the first, and seemed like everybody got notified. I'm, I'm up in my transportation meeting, and she texts me and asks me, uh, uh, "You on the car?" I'm like, "What car?" And then I got on the car, but by me being down in the basement at that hotel, only thing I could hear was paper grating. So I text Carvin and told her that I was gonna leave the meeting, 'cause I couldn't hear nothing. Besides all that, let, let me just say this. Scott, you my boy. I like you. I ain't never lied to you. You ain't never lied to me. But this one I'm gonna say publicly. You one of the best lawyers in the state. You got to stop getting into politics and do what's right for this county, man. You would tell me one thing and turn around and tell other board members something else. And it's confusing to me in, in causing problems on this board. Anytime Ricky grave wrong, when my attorney tell me I'm wrong, I follow your lead. I always follow your lead. But now, it, it's getting to the point where, I don't know if you have too much on you, but it, it is getting... It's not right. And I'm just saying that. And the reason I'm saying it publicly is for you to start doing what's right. Because I don't have a problem, no board member on this board, we all got different opinions. But for the change of meeting back, and, and I don't even know nothing about it, to me, that's a problem. And I don't know how I would vote, 'cause if some of the ones do not have insurance, is my job as a supervisor to do what's best for this county? But when you take me out of the set scenario, I, I don't even have a vote. So, I guess they figure we weren't gonna vote for it, so that's the reason they changed the meeting, and, and let me say this. We need to get back in order, man, because this is just me. This is out of order. And one thing you know about me, I, I studied government, and I'm not the attorney. You are the attorney. So it's your job to make sure that we are in order. It, it, to me, it's not your job to... Where if, if Ricky wrong, I don't wanna tell Ricky he wrong, I'm just gonna do whatever. You always told me, but I don't think that's right, and I follow you. Everybody on this board, if you're gonna be our lawyer to keep us out of trouble, they need to go with your recommendation, 'cause that's why I say, "Well, Scott, what is your recommendation?" And you always say, "I, I'm not getting on you, and I'm not saying this to make you better." Better, I'm saying it to make you better, 'cause you better than that. And let me move on to the next thing. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna say something about the insurance deal. I got a question. Since I've been on this board, two of the main things always been garbage and insurance. Every time insurance co, come up, it go up. I watched the meeting. We went on and voted to, to, to renew everything, but the questions wasn't asked. Did it go up? Did it stay the same, or did it go down? Do anybody know that? 'Cause it usually go up seven percent.
And it's going up this time?
Certain things went up on it.
So, why, why did nobody ask the questions? Ain't nothing wrong with going back, but the... Ain't nothing wrong with going back, but the questions need to be asked. Did it decrease or did it increase or do we even care when it come to certain stuff?
Certain of your fixed rates did increase. The projected cost decreased. It's just a projection, though. Is that a true value or not? Who's to say? Now, a lot of it depends on one particular claimant, but, and I don't know what the result is of that one, so.
You been here long enough to know every time the insurance man say that they have a seven percent increase, I always say, what? Put it in numbers where we can understand how much it going up in numbers. I didn't hear none of that.
The piece of paper that he had, which I texted over to Angela, I didn't even know you were on the call at all.
I was a second and I...
And I didn't know that at all.
I got off it, because I couldn't...
And I texted that to Angela, because that was...
Let me explain something. When, for near future, when anybody calls in, if you sitting in that seat, Mr. President.
Call, I went through it during COVID, you can hear it.
If you do this, I can't hear nothing. And that's the reason I got off the call, because it was static and I ain't hear nothing but paper moving.
All I'm saying is I would have sent you that number, too, had you been there.
Let me say this and I'm gonna move on.
And again, that's not, that's not my job to send numbers or whatever. That should have been something that the insurance agent sent to everybody.
But it wasn't asked, didn't nobody ask? Did it decrease or increase? So, now, I wanna know, did it decrease or increase? Cause all our employees, whether they go up, they love their name, Blue Cross. That's what they want, that's what they want. I learned that from being on this board. It don't matter, it don't matter whether it increased or decreased. A lot of people like Nike. They don't care how much it cost. A lot of employees like Blue Cross. They don't care how much it costs, but we need to know as a board, did it increase or decrease?
It's gonna be an increase. But let me say this also, supervisor Gray, on that one. That was approved so fast. I was online when that happened and I voted against it because every board member wasn't here. And my reason was voting against it also is because we had another vendor out there that was gonna give us cost of what insurance would be. It could have been Blue Cross and Blue Shear that they would have, I don't know. But my thing is, we didn't even give that company a chance to come back and give us some figures of what insurance would cost. They just jumped and just approved that right off the bat, knowing it was gonna be an increase. It is gonna be an increase. We all know there is an increase in that. It never stayed the same. So, my thing is, we don't know what the savings was gonna be or what the cost was gonna be. They just jumped and approved something. And that was my reason for voting against it, because we didn't even give that other company a chance to come and tell us if we was gonna have a savings or an increase. That's something should have been done. That was just disrespectful to that company. And that is not how this board should work. So, my thing is, it was a jump in and just do something. And because I don't know if some favors out there had been done or whatever, not saying I was not gonna go with that. I probably was gonna go with that. Because it's local and it is good for us, but we should have taken the time to find out if there was gonna be an increase or a decrease. And then it was approved. Once it was approved, he came back and told what the increases was gonna be. Why didn't you all wait until he told what the increases was gonna be before you all approved something? You just approved something without and then let him tell what the increases were? That shouldn't have been done. It just shouldn't have been done.
The last thing I wanna address is this. I would like to recommend that in the near future, anything dealing with changing policy or revising anything in this county, me as one supervisor needed, not at the meeting, I needed before the meeting where I can read over it and come back at the next meeting and do whatever I got to do. You gave it to us in a timely manner. A lot of people have started bringing stuff to us and I haven't even looked over it, but they want us to vote on it as soon as they bring it. I don't operate like that. And I'm gonna advise anybody that got any changes, dealing with any contract or anything we got, need to be brought in a timely manner or email me on a Wednesday or Thursday when we got a board meeting on Monday. I don't need it the same day of the board meeting, because I don't know what I'm doing, because I haven't read over it.
Ready. She stepped out.
I'm good, I'm right here, I'm right here.
You on the phone?
No, I'm good.
I asked if we could wait on the insurance claim, because I wanted to see what one of those other people, whether we could get them on or off our claim, because it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar claim. So, I asked for that. They told me, the insurance agent said it couldn't be done. And nobody was out pushing.
I'm just trying to make county government better and accountable. And the last thing I wanna say is this. It's just the way I feel. I'll wait till you come back. Mr. President, and the last thing, this is just me feeling like this. I feel that it's too much being discussed about county business before the meeting. And I would love for county business to be discussed in the board meeting. Last, this is for the county administrator and our county, I mean, chancery clerk. I don't know what the deal is with y'all, too, but all these emails, I ain't used to getting all these emails. And we on the same team. And we need to figure out how to work together. Cause at the end of the day, only thing matters to me was best for this county. My sympathy goes out to the Harden Woods, the Jacksons, the Davids, the Harris, the Carl, the Bonds, Fletcher, the Jacksons. I was gone when Mr. Calaway died. And I'm just gonna be real honest with you, I've been knowing Brad ever since our daughters went to Cathedral together, played basketball together. Him and his wife always been good people to me and I was really hurt that I wasn't here when he passed away. The Thomas family and I don't, everybody know about Mr. Beasley. I ain't even got to say what kind of person Mr. Walter Beasley Jr. was. Everybody know, I mean. Ever since I met the Beesels at Cathedral, seemed like all of them the same way. All of them, I may be wrong, that's just my opinion. All of them good people to me. That's what they shown me. The William family, Fletcher family and what did the name you say? The Congresswoman?
Oh, the Congresswoman.
Lowry. Congresswoman Lowry passed away. And I'm gonna say this again. I'm saying this because anybody don't get along all the time, but I want this board to be able to disagree on stuff and still be able to communicate. Ain't nothing I do is personal. Ain't nothing I do personal. Only thing I wanna do is, when we go somewhere, what do I say about Adams County? We the what?
Number one county.
I bragged on Adams County as being the number one county. And the worst thing to happen is, the number one county start getting unethical when they start using us as examples when we go places. You know, be the laughing stock of the state of Mississippi. I love my county. We just need to start doing stuff in order. And that concludes my report.
Okay, I don't have much, because I brought up a lot, but I wanted to say this. Roger showed me some pictures of a greenfield row where a personal person went out and cut trees, a tree cutter person went out and cut trees off someone's property. And they expect the county to pick it up, but I just want them to know the county wants a personal tree cutter contractor come out and cut their trees off their property. We are not responsible for picking those limbs up. There's a bunch of them all over the county that they cutting. We're not responsible for picking them up. If they cut them, they need to pick them up. The county don't have time to go out and pick up limbs that been cut by a personal contractor. So, I want that, to make that clear. Another thing, your supervisor Gray and myself, we did go see Congressman Thompson, Senator Hyde and Congressman Wicker. We did attend those offices. We did talk about the Morgantown party, you know, funding that city. And also South Palestine for funding for it. I did make that clear, just Morgantown is first party. So, hopefully, we're gonna do a update, go back and try to update, find out what's going on with that. And I could step in to make contact with Congressman's office to find out what's going on, see if they will give us some funding for it. But we did present packages to them in regards to that and hope that we can get some funding. They was gonna look into it and see where all some funding is gonna come from. So, we'll do an update on that. That's all I have.
Mr. President, before you go, I left out one important thing. Oh, man, you called out about raises. Let me tell y'all something. I always been like this and I think raises need to be addressed during budget period. And I'm not finna start every time somebody come up in here and trying to get somebody to raise, because they done cut some or they done did this and that. We right around the corner from budget period. And that can wait until the budget. That's just my opinion.
Ms. Dean?
I don't know anything.
Ms. Lewis?
I have a few things. I need to request travel to the Chancery Clerk Leadership Conference in Bay St. Louis. It's May sixth to the eighth.
You heard the request, the motion?
So, both.
Second, motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
We submitted over a certification, a minutes to Home Bank. To Home Bank, the transition for the Justice Court part. And they said they need a specific resolution and certification from the board that says that per seduce should be added and that the predecessor should be removed. It needs to be more specific. So, let's see exactly what they said. I guess we just need a motion for a resolution from the board that states who's to be removed, who's to be added. And I think there's just one account that has the number on there. So, they just said they need a separate resolution from the board for that.
You heard the request, Ms. Lewis. Motion by supervisor Gray, second by supervisor Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
We need to have approval for the bonds. It is the blank bond for Adams County Sheriff's Office. The bond for Annabelle Wilson. So, it's only two, just need to have the approval for those two bonds to regular.
Annabelle Wilson and who else?
The blanket bond for the Sheriff's Office.
You heard the request, Ms. Lewis. Can I get a motion? Second, motion by supervisor Gray, second. Second by supervisor Hutchins. All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
The last thing I have is the need to have approval for the February tax redemption settlement for the Chancery Clerk's.
You heard the request, Ms. Lewis. Motion by supervisor Gray, I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
That's all I have.
Scott?
There's an old deed of trust. We think we've had one or two of these in the past. Evidently, back in, what? Two thousand and five or so, there was some sort of FUD deal where the county was, they were on a deed of trust. And this was never spread across the minutes of the board supervisors. And so, it was void. And this person's asked us to, you know, declare it void or whatever. The way that's done, they filed a lawsuit, I think, in county court. And, you know, we're basically saying we don't contest that there's, this is not on the minutes. And asked Paige and Ring to check and see if it's on the minutes. And they said it's not. Does she need permission for us to declare that?
You heard the request, Attorney. Can I get a motion? Motion by supervisor Gray, I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
And I have a couple items to be determined. I've got a co-contract that I need to review. I'll bring it back at the next board meeting. I thought we, I think I approved it in the past, but I don't think we ever got approved by the board. I can't say that I approved it now, so.
We made a motion pending your review.
Was it pending legal?
I think it was.
I'll check for you.
Either way, I'll have it back.
I know we brought it up.
We talked about it.
The motion.
I thought it was approved, I couldn't, I can't say I approved it now. I don't remember what it is.
Okay, we do it the next week.
We've sent a request for that property on, is it Southview or Southland, Ricky?
Southview.
Always get those two interchanged. Requested from the Secretary of State. I'm gonna push, I wanna actually talk to somebody higher up on it, because, you know, we've spent lots of money on that anyway. And the state's not gonna really do anything about it, so we'll see if there's any options on that end. But I've sent that request out. All the EWP requests have been sent out. We've had contact with all but maybe two of them said they would sign. They just haven't brought back their signatures. In Cartridge Point Road, the owners have said that they will sign. Waiting for them to send those back over to me. And then, of course, we already talked about Burke Road. How, and we're just waiting on the federal government to either give us a fifty-year permit or give us a right of way, either one. That's it.
Ms. Washington? You don't have anything?
Yeah, we have a public hearing after McFarlane reports. On Old Woodville Road, yeah.
No.
Yeah, yeah. It should be on your agenda.
Yeah, it was, that's how we just...
It's a formality, I believe, but...
I think we've cleared everything out of the folder. I do want to keep families of all those affected by the storms over the weekend in our prayers. Just tragic. I watched drawn footage of Tyler Town and, I mean, it's just scary. If that doesn't scare you, I don't know what will. You never know what's gonna come. Right away, that's what you talked about. I do wanna talk about a few issues that supervisor Gray and supervisor Hutchins brought up about the last meeting. I know we discussed... I know we discussed possibly moving the meeting to the sixth, I never got clarification on that, I never saw it on the calendar. Only thing I saw was the agenda when it came through by email, uh, that the meeting was set for that Monday. And I think he did say it did come over Friday night or Saturday, I don't remember, it was after Halloween. Um, the only regret I have as far as that goes is that the, the contract should already, they should already been noticed before that anyway. We gave them a timeframe to provide proof of insurance, they didn't provide it. And I, I've got a job to do, and just do what's right for this county. And if they were acting illegally and not holding a fair end of the deal, they should have been terminated that day. Should not have been extended five minutes, ten minutes, whatever. They didn't even make the deadline to show proof of insurance, there wasn't proof of insurance, they were late on that. So, you know, I've got to do what's right for this county, we should have done it at the next meeting, we didn't, so be it. Uh, as far as insurance goes, um, I voted because, uh, it was the best bet for this county. Um, I had tremendous, uh, concerns about the group that came in here. I had concerns about their character, I had concerns about, uh, people involved in it. And I have concerns about the way they access some of our employee information that I don't think is right. And, uh, I wouldn't, if they were the lowest, I wouldn't have gone with them. Because that's not who I do business with. And I don't do business with people who don't act right, put people in positions to give them access to information they shouldn't have. And, uh, that's where I stand on that. So, uh, need a motion for... Yes, sir.
Uh, I, I, I understand your concerns, and, uh, some of it I agree with. But, uh, we, we been doing business so long, a certain way, uh, that don't make us right. And I checked about the insurance deal, and a, a couple people told me, it depends. Uh, they weren't one hundred percent wrong. I mean, I don't know, that's the reason we got an attorney. And for the contract deal is, like I say, I'm like this, man, I'm gonna do what's best for this county. But the contract sit up here and said, uh, I'm going by what he said. He the one said everything was good. And then I found out it wasn't good, but the contract right here, I ain't gonna even say what he said, who did you, but I'm done with that. I, I ain't got no problem with that.
Um, give me a motion. Oh, uh, Joey did come back and drop this off. He said he texted me what? The two lights over the front sidewalk are on a photo cell as designed, but the switch was turned off. I told Johnny, y'all wanted to keep that switch on, he said, okay, and was going to get a lock so that no one can turn it off.
Was Johnny part of that? I mean, at this point, I, I mean, I'm gonna need a county employee to, to kinda okay what these people are saying and want us to vote on them, because, uh, after his contract over with us at that ball field, we might not never see him no more for nothing else. So I, I like Robbie, uh, Johnny, to, to verify what this guy is saying, and I'll be fine with it. Because, because I made motion.
He also said he looked at drainage issues and gave Johnny some ideas of how to correct it. I will send an email about that.
Gave Johnny some ideas?
We'll, we'll hold it till next meeting.
Yeah, probably need to talk to him.
Yeah. What motion you need? Tell Angel that she need to stay on the phone.
Angel, stay on the phone, we need to get her... Y'all missed y'all's job. Y'all missed y'all's job.
Oh, I just...
I'm just kidding.
Get the call back, so I can tell them next time when everyone...
I'm just kidding.
Okay. Um, and that's when they got the second quote for the, um, thirty-two kilowatt generator, it's a General Rack. And with heat, natural heating and cooling, it's thirty-six eight ninety-five. And with Thorp, it's thirty-eight three hundred.
Thirty-eight hundred?
That's what we get.
Thirty-eight hundred?
Oh, I'm sorry, I said thirty-eighteen hundred. Thirty-eight thousand.
I get it on the head, didn't rub.
So it's, uh, the lowest is, uh, natural heating and cooling. And that's the third, too.
Is this the decision that needs to be made today?
Yeah, we was trying to get it approved today, when we saw the lowest being, or whatever, so when they put the gates up, if they can tie into the generator.
Well, I mean, they run the wires over there, they don't have to have the generator, right, Rob?
They still do it up, your generator's already been approved, though, haven't they?
So what we wait, man? I'm just asking.
We just requesting a move forward when they...
Is it in within your budget requirement?
Yeah, it was on the paper that...
We don't have a motion, what?
Is it in the budget requirements, you're supposed to... Right?
We don't have a motion.
We gotta move money for, okay.
Generator.
I need a motion to move, if the board is fighting for it, we can move money into it for that line, issue to...
All this has been spread across the minutes, and it has been approved. We just asked for permission to go ahead and move forward.
Yeah, because money's gotta be moved.
Money's gotta be moved out of where? These are part of your special projects for that original art money? Oh, okay, I... All right, can I get a motion?
Self-vote.
Motion by Supervisor Gray, can I get a second? I'll second. And so, all in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it. Book y'all, that's all we have. Need a motion for closing termination?
Self-vote.
Motion by Supervisor Gray, I'll second it, all in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.